Same lenses. Yeah, but she had it, she was on it the day before, she had the prescription. But I ran it because of my, my prescription has changed. And I go to the eye doctor, August. I hate for lenses and all that.
I don't know how you can touch it. I would be afraid to go off the drive.
Well, I'm, I'm okay. It's a little fuzzy at night, I couldn't drive it. Because it's really, but it's fatigue, I was really tired driving. But it's the read, I can't read. You know, because I couldn't. But lens there was gonna be in the opposite side. So it was good.
We're officially with.
Style, styled up and it was, it was awesome.
Yes, I just turned it on.
We're not officially meeting.
Yes. And there's no one on the side.
So they quoted it, but did they quote this? I didn't see the cyber.
He said there is cyber.
It's, I seen the deductions, but. I don't see your quote. Oh.
Get in your glasses.
Glass torture.
Yes. I did not because I thought we had that meeting that time that we let him know that we were going to be and we should move out of words. Okay, okay. I'll go jump, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Make sure that it's somewhere.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I will, I will touch base with them. Yes. And I have not done anything that, uh, to walk. Which happens now, yeah. Yeah. He's better than us.
You guys ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order, we'll start with the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any? Is that enough to sign it? Good?
You're good.
Thank you.
Your word.
Approval of the minutes from June thirteenth.
I think they're accurate. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, code enforcement report. I guess Jeff's not here.
There was just one of them on that. Just to update you. Uh, he, he's in the office and today asked him about the, the Linder move property.
The what?
The Linder move.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. On that, there was the previous action. Head down to court and there was fines involved. There was a complaint that a neighbor had said that some of the car had been moved to the back of the property where people could not see them. And as, that was on Friday. State offered for Frank to go out, take a look to see if he could see that. Um, the thought was if that's what is occurring, then there's probably gonna be a citations issue for this reoccurring again. And going towards probably another court situation. I'm trying to take care of what's now just being moved, so.
So, so he was fined, he was fined five hundred dollars and he dated that suit.
That part of him, I'm sure.
Didn't get that fine or?
Yeah, you should get some of that fine. I can have Michelle ask the DJ.
Yeah, this is the follow-up inspection, which was the last action, he did allow, he could not see the ring and that's in correspondence with the, the neighbor, they said, well, you can use our property to take a look at what we're talking about. So that was part of the inspection that was gonna occur next, which has happened completely before this, so. That's kind of where that's leaving at this moment.
Okay, thank you. I did talk to Jeff on Friday. The solar project. They have not planted that field and they have not voted. So there are violation with weeds not being moved. So Jeff was gonna send a notice of violation that they had to cut in seven days. So I don't know if he did that Friday or Monday, but that has to be addressed if they do not.
Normally when they do send a notice, out, they sent it to our office as well right away and I have not received any letters on that yet.
Okay. Well, I talked to him Friday afternoon, so I imagine he did it yes today. So we just wanna follow up on that. Because it's seven days and we can't, I guess, we gotta do something.
Yeah, there's some Mesa stuff coming.
Yes.
That's, that'll wait, call with an agent.
Correct. And, and I talked to him, I talked to the owner a month ago and said, yeah, no problem, I'm gonna mow it down. But that didn't happen.
They made a little attempt out front there, they hit a couple of strikes, but that was about it. Can't have this idea.
Yeah, it's not getting off on the right foot. Can't see that already. Any good questions on that? It's extensive. Buildings, renovations. Couldn't know how to get through it all.
Yeah, one of these stuff.
S E O report.
We need a waiver on the camera subject system, they need a waiver for well isolation distance. I think I should sustain from the family.
Besides the work, I'm going to die.
How quick do I wanna do this? Yesterday is a failed subject system.
We can't, it's got a five minutes. He's pretty remote though, I know where he's at. Hey, talk, we're in meeting. But, but we need your, but we need your help here. Justin Cameron asked for a waiver, I think you see it in your packet, for a well. But, but, but Sam has to abstain, so I'm gonna put you on speaker here. Scott.
Yes.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we grant the waiver.
I will say.
All in favor? Aye. Is that good?
It's good.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay, no problem.
Looks like Zoom, he's arriving. Okay. I didn't see anything else other than reported hours for shattery. I make a motion that we accept the report from LTL.
I'll second.
All in favor? Police report. Okay, we'll skip over that in case the chief shows up. Virgin Real Fire Company report. Want anything to add, want to tell?
No, first good.
Any questions? So the Main Creek warehouse plans. There's a patch, but I don't have anything attached.
I'm assuming this is the one, spread along two twenty-two by the center.
Do you have any other comment? It says once we're the joint comprehensive claim, they'd like to give us an opportunity to provide comment on the claim.
My close, Mr. Richard. Not that close. They're not mandated, I mean, we have an agreement with them that I believe requires them to notify us if the project is within somebody's, nobody's boundary. But that's not the case here.
They're coming out and running about it.
Yeah.
Yeah. The chest.
The center would be here.
Yeah. That is one thing.
Well, there's, there is a conditional use, which is a zoning hearing that according to the email will occur in September. So unless they get that zoning approval, the project won't happen. But typically a conditional use is a matter of demonstrating that you can meet the objective standards of the ordinance. And it gives objectors the opportunity to present evidence that they either don't meet the objective standards, notwithstanding the testimony of the applicant, or that there are negative impacts in the community that are unusual for the type of use. Meaning that if something is listed as a conditional use of the zoning ordinance, it's presumed to be appropriate for the location at which it's located. But if there's something unusual about the site that'll have detrimental impacts that are beyond what would typically be the case for the same use, you know, then it could be rejected by the township. I don't see that this is an unusual warehouse. I mean, it's, the impacts from this will be the same as what normally is associated with a warehouse. Anyway, so I don't, just a quick glance at it. I don't see whether it'd be a basis for a successful objection.
That, I don't have. It's, uh, it's gonna get developed, I'd rather see a warehouse than.
Well, certainly that wasn't packed.
Two hundred homes. Two hundred homes.
I thought they were looking for a shopping center at that location for a long time.
For forty years, but.
Forty years.
Right?
Yeah, it's been for. Well, you know what the retail market is.
Yeah.
The retail is not.
Motor is not good anymore.
So the warehouse is the alternative to retail because that's what retail has become.
That's the new retail.
It's the new retail. Yeah, I don't have any comment. Review the risk management source proposal. And when does it renew? You said all this first?
Yes.
I, I, I think the proposal's good. I would just like this, I don't know if we can approve it, but I would just like to see different deductible options.
Okay.
To with the prices.
Sure.
Like up to a thousand dollar deductible on the comp and the comprehensible. The comp and the collision deductible. I'd like to see up to a thousand, how that would change our premium. Is that good, Sam?
Yeah.
But if we don't meet till then, how, how can we approve it or should we just? Can we approve it now? I think. We get a better quote for it, how do we do that? Can't.
With a different vendor or?
No, same thing. Just better.
Different deductible.
Different.
Well, you could authorize the township manager to, uh, accept an alternative proposal.
Of cheaper price. Okay, I'll. I'll make the motion that we accept this quote. Pending for the township manager not getting a better quote from them with higher deductibles. She's authorized to accept the better price at higher deductibles.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Do you wanna do anything with cyber?
Well, I think we should.
That is pretty much just a given with the insurance policy. It automatically comes onto it.
No, it doesn't.
Doesn't it?
We have a premium here, we have limits. A hundred thousand for nine ninety-two. Two hundred fifty thousand for twenty-two hundred. Five hundred thousand for three six hundred, I don't know.
I think it's prudent to have some coverage for this. I have a client who recently had a fraudulent email sent to the bank to direct the bank to transfer funds electronically, like five hundred thousand dollars on the account, you know. It's crazy what kinda stuff, because, and it looked legit. They got into the email system and were impersonating the township financial person.
They just did that last week. My controller, I mean, it looked exactly like it came from here, wired this money, hundred eight ninety-eight thousand.
Yeah, it's the same, yeah.
But we have it at place and they don't do that without my authorization, but they were nervous when I see it. I mean, it looked, you could not tell, it was not from me, because I went up on her computer and it looks exactly.
Well, what they're, in my experience with this, the insurance company's gonna want you to have like, uh, you know, more complicated password system, you know, like a double. So we gotta send you a text before and then a password or something like that.
Yeah, we, we got to their doors and they did it, we, before we got our insurance, they did, they do a run through. How, how vulnerable are you? So you gotta type in a few things. They still hack, we changed passwords anyway, they could tell. Our, the IT went in there and see, well, they came in and after we changed the passwords, they tried to hack it a couple more times. Yeah, I, I don't think it's a bad idea, like for a hundred thousand. I mean, you do just have to rebuild the whole computer system.
Oh, yeah.
So there's nine hundred bucks. I'll make a motion that we add that coverage.
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay. Okay, we wanna. Point Jen is the township manager, she was township secretary. Looking to appoint her as the township manager effective retroactively July seventh. For some stuff she had to do for us. So I'll make that motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, old business. Old business, Jay's Auto. We don't really have to do anything with that.
No, he's not here and I had to say a conversation with Jen about this. My recommendation would be that we do not release the escrow, we keep the escrow and see if he resurfaces, which I think inevitably he will. But, you know, the escrow is the leverage we have for him to.
How much is it? How much, what's left?
He has fourteen hundred ninety-three dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Progress on Hewitt Avenue, I'm gonna defer that and we'll have an executive session here.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Engineers report. I'm not gonna even try and pronounce that. Watch that up.
If I have it right, I think it was Ku, Kukilka.
Something like that.
Closer than the first time I tried. But, yeah. Yeah, I was here to kinda discuss the plan. Uh, there were recommendations from the planning commission, but, uh, you wanna touch on it with the supervisor and stuff?
Sure. Uh, have you guys had a chance to look at the plan or?
Yeah, I did, I did look at the plan, but it's not very clear. And I know, I, I know where it's at and it's very hard to understand what the, so if you give me the skinny on what, what's actually trying to happen.
Yeah. All right, so this property's up on the Maiden Creek Road, up on the top of the hill. We have a existing house here on, on this property, which is owned by Bryce.
On Main Creek Road?
On Maiden Creek Road, correct.
Okay, didn't know that.
Wile actually owns, Smile Moss actually lived in a house down here that.
Right.
Right on six sixty-two, he bought this house for his mom four or five years ago, we actually came in for you guys and we did an annexation, we took some property from Teeny, uh, back in two thousand nineteen, I think that was.
Yeah.
Yeah, two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
Uh, so this here, just, uh, in the prop, when we, when he purchased this property, we did some, some surveying for him and noticed that this fence that Kukoka has in the back of his property here, uh, encroached over the property line on to their side. So this is how to resolve that encroachment. Essentially, we're gonna shift this line over fifteen feet, which makes all of this fence be entirely on his property. Uh, and extend a strip out to the road, that way if, for whatever reason he ever needs or wants to put it in a separate access, he has that ability. And then basically, uh, Bryce is just gonna do a straight land swap. So whatever he's giving him here on the side, he's getting back in the back here and, uh, Wile Hunt's back in here, so I mean, essentially this extra fifteen feet doesn't mean anything to him, whereas back here gives him a little more space around where, but maybe it's a tree stand.
So. So that existing lot, and who owns the, the smaller lot of the two?
Oh, Kukoka's the, the smaller lot.
That's currently a landlot parcel.
Right.
So even though they have access by a drive that goes through the other lot below it.
This is the.
Technically, they're going from a landlot parcel to a flag lot, which is committed with conditions. But, uh, one of the things the planning commission kind of settled on is that it seems to be a better situation for that property than having that continuous landline parcel.
Yeah. It's, yeah, there's some, some unique parcels up there. Who, who did in the beginning, wow.
Are those, uh, conditions for right by Saldo or is it something?
They're, they're all in the Saldo. Yeah, and that, and that, there was a confusing section there, which was one of the waivers they created that per the conditions, you can't have that, I think they called it the access strip laws.
Right.
Count towards the lot area, but the idea was since this is creating a better situation than what's there. They recommended that, that certain requirement be waived so that it didn't, that it wasn't exact land swap as they're trying to tend to.
I think that's far better than. Everybody takes an interview with that joint use cells, it has. That doesn't work.
Yeah, I, I.
I like the flag lot, because it.
I, I like the, doing them narrow access to the road too.
And, and, and believe they're not looking to do it right away, I think this is.
No, uh, this is just, right now, this is just the land swap, so that, uh, the two property owners, Bryce and Kukoka can work out, resolve this issue and then, uh, Mr. Kukoka, you know, uh, when he's planning on doing it, if he's gonna plan on doing it next year or five years from now.
Or even if he doesn't do it, at least he has the option.
Right, even if he doesn't do it, even if he never does it, the future property owner might have the ability to provide a separate driveway.
In a lot of the comments, we had spoke to conditions for if they were to use that as a drive. And, and as Chris was saying, the conditions in the Saldo were kind of stated on, and going to be added to the plan, saying, well, A, B, and C, per the Saldo sections have to be followed.
I, I think just correcting a problem they didn't create, well, they created maybe with the fence, but it's nice, he's working it out.
With the planning commission or any other company?
Is the driveway possible at that access point?
It, it creates at the smallest point fifteen feet width, which is still, it's more than the minimum requirement for a driveway and less than the maximum. So even though it's kind of tight for the.
Distance is okay and.
But some of that, it would need to be looked at, but there is the two existing driveways that are just to the side of it, which are being used, so it's assuming that could, it is, since it's Penn Dot Road, it would have to get a proper Penn Dot anyway.
Yeah, they would need a hitch of peace to do the driveways.
It's, it's flat on top, so this is basically this, the land all slopes away from Main Creek Road here, going down to the, to the north. So it's actually, you know, the, the Bryce house is actually at the, the highest point along the road and then it sort of slopes off in both directions. But it's almost, it's almost flat going across the front of this property.
I gotta look, I don't know where that's at, but I'm gonna look tonight.
So look for the, uh, the horseshoe driveway here.
I think I know which one it is.
Right. They have a great view.
But I, and then there is a little road that goes alongside there and I didn't know where that went.
Yeah, so that little road is essentially like, you know, it's, it's their access to the rear of their lot and that goes straight through.
Yeah.
You would never see this because this is, this is forty feet down below the road and it's in the woods, so it's completely hidden.
And the driveway they share, it, it just looks like a large driveway.
Right.
Right.
Right, all right. Any other concerns, Chris?
There's a, number one, I think the board of supervisors has to approve the use of, or the creation of a flag rock. Uh, number two, we have four waivers. Uh, number two, we have uh, four waivers that were recommended by the planning commission and then uh, if the board so deems a conditional final agreement.
Are you okay with all that?
Yep, I would agree, that's very consistent with what was discussed. Yeah, the the Saldo has the section for flag lots that are, they are prohibited unless permission is granted by the township board of supervisors. And then I kind of noted two of the conditions that really uh, should be noted as conditions on the plan for this, but.
They said the scale waiver, the complete boundary survey, whatever.
And then the.
Depth to width.
Yep.
Those are all things that help out.
Yep.
And then the last one is the definition of.
Flag lot.
Flag lot.
Right.
We have to do the waivers in order.
You could do them all once, there's no improvements being proposed, so there's no, no improvements agreed. Alright, so the motion would be the proof of the flag lot, three waivers and conditional approval.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I have a question, is Bruce still in the office or?
He is, he comes in uh, you know, two or three days a week, he does uh, you know, a lot of big picture stuff, he's good as, you know. He's been reporting new clients and stuff like that.
Cause I was looking at something that he did for the township almost twenty years ago. The power feed would be accessible, but what you're telling me is if I call the office, I can get home.
Yeah, but you're probably better off just talking to me and then uh, I'll relate to him whatever, you know, whatever questions you have specifically on the project, because then I can.
Jeez, we held the spot for you.
Hey, thank you, sorry I was late.
Yeah, it's alright.
Run around other meetings, so. Are you ready for him?
Yeah, go ahead.
Alright, thank you for uh, June two thousand twenty two for Richmond Township, activity recap, four thousand seven hundred twenty five patrol miles. Uh, one hundred eighty three patrol hours, we handled one hundred and forty four incidents, wasted about forty seven hours of of call time. We investigated ten vehicle accidents, issued nineteen traffic citations. The officers completed about fifteen hours of traffic checks, uh, nine hours of paperwork, eighteen total vehicle stops. Criminal investigations follow up, twenty seven hours, one hour court time. Activities, we investigated a fraud or subject attempted to pass a fraudulent check, the victim's name for ninety five hundred dollars, investigation's still open. Uh, we're investigating fraud, selling of items from township residents. Actually, that's a, that's a mistype, it's a township business. See, my CIA has been assigned that case, I still used to work on that. We investigated reported theft of a light bulb from a shed light fixture, we have no known suspects at the time. We investigated, reported criminal mischief to a pool of township residents, that investigation has been closed, victim refused to prosecute. Uh, we investigated reported harassment at township business, that investigation's still open, ongoing. Then we investigated theft of a wall from a township business, we have no suspects for that. Personnel, the only thing I have to report is we're looking for part town, part time officers. So anybody knows anybody that's act, act one twenty certified and looking for part time work, they can send the, they can drop a resume off if you ask me, the hours of eight A M. to four P M. Equipment, I've purchased two new tasers and uh, new handgun ulcers and weapon lights, have also been purchased, really issuing them to the officers for our, for the department's annual weapon qualifications, that that was about twenty three hundred dollars. Uh, just wanna mention that money came from a crime launch fund, so it didn't come out of my budget, so they were gracious enough to give me twenty three hundred dollars to purchase those items. The annual department training is actually scheduled for August, that's another type on my part. And we're working on, I just talked to Craig Conrad, we have to get with Robbie about painting lines, for speed line, for speed lines, we're hoping to have that done by the end of the month, we can get that coordinated at some point. Um, and also the uh, July truck detail was canceled due to manpower issues with vacations, etc., we're just gonna get enough people together. So they're looking to schedule it uh, for a later date this year, probably September is just what we're thinking. That's all I have, anybody have any questions, concerns?
I I do not. But this is not on the agenda per se, but uh, we we had uh talked about the the strain on the police department in recent years and I, Chief Old Schaefer gave a a pretty good slide presentation on what's going on in the township and the borough in uh, recent years, it's not good. There's a a strain on the the township police and the the borough, the Fleetwood Police. So I was gonna propose that maybe Mr. Old Schaefer, Chief Old Schaefer, is that correct?
That's fine.
Chief Old Schaefer, so I got it wrong the last time, maybe we could set up a time during the meeting and he could do the slideshow. You know, or or set up a separate time, he could show the public where we're coming from and what it costs and and the the budget's gonna be a little, look to maybe be increased for the police budget and and here's why. And nobody wants to spend more money, especially this this board doesn't, but it 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 brings to light what's going on in our society and the decisions that we might have to make in to increase maybe another patrolman or or something in the future, so I think it would be good if you, that that slideshow was very enlightening for for me and I think maybe if we just maybe advertise it.
I was gonna say we should put it on the website.
Put it on the website and advertise it and, do you think we can do it during a meeting or should we have a separate day? And it would have to be informed your schedule, I mean, you maybe, maybe should give us a, and maybe we should just have a separate meeting. You know, what do you think?
How long was it?
Uh, well, we we were here because we had discussion, so it was probably two hours, I think, with the discussion. So I mean, I'm always open to questions, so you, I mean, I would say at least two hours. I mean, that's not two hours worth of presentation, the presentation itself maybe.
So it should, it should be something, it should be something open on your own, uh, for just that. And maybe you can look at your schedule and get back to us, we can pick a few dates.
Yeah, so a couple of things, depending on how how quickly you wanna get it done, I don't know what kind of time constraints you have there. I will say typically for me, um, anything after August opens up a lot better, it's vacation times and and uh, what have you, so. But whatever works.
It's it's, we wanna look at it for budget, so.
As long as it's before budget, August will be fine.
Sure, or anytime, early September.
Yeah, I I would think early September would probably be better, only because of scheduling, I mean, I think even for the general public, September's things, people, more people around.
Right.
If any nullifications.
Yeah.
So that's kind of how I'm looking at it.
I I'm open for that and I'm just wondering if here, if we have a, if you ever able kind of turn out, you have. If here would be okay, I would think it would be, so.
Yeah, I couldn't imagine that you would get, who knows?
Let us know your schedule, let us know your schedule one night, maybe like a seven o'clock meeting. And we'll we'll free up this room and then we'll be here and we'll advertise it.
I'll know you.
You know, advertise it, but something that works for you, just that's that presentation that you gave was.
Well, I think it's.
Was enlightening and it just gives you the 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 whole picture, a better picture of just assuming this is what's going on.
I I think it's, you're absolutely correct and I think the the biggest issue that I ran into over my career is a lot of people just don't know. And it's not, it's no fault anybody in in general, it's just they don't understand what police work, what entail, what it entails. And that's not, it's not putting anybody down, it's just, that's just the way it is, right, I mean, I I know about it, cause like, I live it. But the general public, a lot of people don't know what it's, what it takes to to run a department and what kind of manpower you need and and what you face, especially in today's society. So I think it's important we get it out to the public and I I absolutely agree that I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, so you let us know and come back to us with with a date and then we'll have a public meeting and.
Yeah, I would say I'll I'll get with, we can email and I'm thinking within the first two weeks of September, we can get it done.
Are you good with that?
Yep.
I think it's a good idea.
I think so too.
Let the public know, I mean, because nobody wants to hear about, and police is our, one of our largest, it's not, it's probably the largest, but it's by the force by far, but we did a survey a couple of years ago and I think it's it's worked out well, and and especially in these times, but it would be good to get the public input also.
I agree a hundred percent.
Alright.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Solicitors report.
Great, you have our summary, uh, there's a sheriff's sale that we're working on and uh, it's been the service has been slow, I'm not sure. That's in the hands of the sheriff, but they haven't been able to uh, make service yet so that that sheriff's sale could uh, be initiated. The one thing that uh, I want your feedback on tonight is uh, on this Richards matter, they made a lump sum payment to Pam's. But by paying Pam's directly, Pam's didn't take into account the expenses that we wanted to have covered in that payment. So that payment that Pam sent, his payment in full is actually short four hundred eighty eight dollars. Uh, I'd like your blessing for us to send a letter to notify the property owner Pam's that uh, we won't release the lien that was filed against the property until we get that additional payment, is that agreeable?
I'll make that motion.
Yep.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Alright, uh, just for your information, uh, Jason Terracurts, uh, he was having some timing issues with money, but he's been very uh, committed to making his periodic payments and he just asked for relief for one month and I told him that was fine, I hope that's okay with you.
Yep.
Uh, I don't expect a problem with that. Uh, that's all I wanted to talk to you about, other support.
Making progress.
Yes. Do you have any questions? Have you not?
Can we look at the report?
Yeah. Alright, well, something happens till next quarter. Oh, I wanted to mention the bridge litigation in Hope Creek, I mean, I think you're aware, Brian, but.
Absolutely aware.
You know, we were a participant through Berks County in the litigation in the Commonwealth Court and that litigation has been successful so that the uh, bridge tolling program that was proposed is now thrown out. Now, there was subsequent legislative action and that I don't, I haven't digested that, so I don't know what the consequences of that legislation are, but I know from a litigation standpoint that the current proposal is now not gonna happen.
And I think the legislation, from what I read, is pretty favorable, they have to follow different rules and they can't just do what they want. I I think it's a huge win and I don't think the average person realizes how huge it is, not just for the current bridge tolling projects, but the ones that they would tack on after this. And just arbitrarily run traffic off onto different roads and they went way over their their authority and what they tried to do and they got their hands slapped, which is good. The disappointing thing for me is that our local government has to sue our state government and the taxpayer pays the bill on both sides. That's ridiculous and then the this, the 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 legislation finally comes up with an agreement because they couldn't. After the fact, when they knew this was coming, but we have a very, very dysfunctional legislature.
So the, one of the points that I read, which I really agree with is, you know, there shouldn't be a delegation of the ability to co, basically collect the tax and determine where the revenue is gonna be spent by bureaucrats, you know, I mean that should be the legislature that makes those decisions.
Hundred percent.
And not a bureauc, bureaucracy, so anyway, I I agree, it's a rate outcome.
Yeah, it was a rate outcome and I'm glad that we pursued that, thank you for all the stuff that you did there, it was, it was a huge win, it was a huge win for us.
People asking. I think it did make a difference to have additional parties join.
I think the more publicity you got, the more traction it got, they see they're not gonna be able to sweep the son of a brother. Cause when I talked to him at the meeting and kept it, they said, oh, this is a done deal, this is a done deal, I said, really? It seemed like it's a done deal to me, but if you think it is, oh, it's a done deal, okay.
So that's what's.
Gives everybody that impression.
Yeah, for sure, they just thought they could do whatever. Um, stack back.
No, I was, the only, I was just gonna give a a quick update with the street work, just a, just, no, 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 it was.
Bulletproof stuff.
It was uh, that's still on schedule for the beginning of August, just so everybody's aware, I think, but their schedule can change with weather and something else opening, you can move up or back, but I think they want it first week of August or second, so this time next month, it should be either right in the middle or pretty well wrapped up, so. That and the only other thing was uh, Sheets has been reaching out on designing parameters for stormwater and other questions, so I I was assuming I said something to Jen, that it's probably ramping up to submit what the plan.
To demo.
Yeah.
Redo.
Yeah. It'll be down for some time at some point, but.
It doesn't surprise me.
Yeah. But that was it, I was just gonna provide updates directly.
Stack back. Oh, I don't know that he asked any questions that he knew would answer them.
No.
No.
My only question was the Rus commander's timing indoor system, do we notify Fleetwood, do we get their approval, do we need their approval? I sent email, but I didn't get any response, I just don't know across my, I don't wanna, I don't wanna.
You know, I guess my initial reaction was it's such a small thing, it would count against our total volume. But the right way to do it is to talk to everybody and.
Cause it does, it's no skin off our back whether we pay them or not, they jeopardize something for Fleetwood, et cetera.
Right. So uh, I will talk to Scott about that part.
Yeah, before this guy goes down the road and the Florida. I just didn't think about it till now.
Yeah, I mean, we were just thinking about Rus commander and who's gonna pay the bills.
But the guy that's processing it might be cool, okay, before we.
Yeah, well, this might be, we have another tweak, yeah, I just wanna.
Yeah, I just wanna be on the same page with them and be upfront, I don't wanna do things that, cause they, we have a good partnership, they treat us well. I wanna have set the after party with one guy.
I'll talk to Scott about who we'll afford to do that.
Thank you. Roadmasters report. That's you, Robbie?
You're on. Sent email about the flat bed. Worked us out a little bit to see if that's what we wanted to do.
Yeah, did you get the email?
I did. Um, I got mixed emotions of that whole thing, I think what we do, let's go to the highest bidder. Offer him uh, tell him we take sixteen hundred bucks, if he takes it, we'll have it, if not, we'll re-listen, okay?
What is it?
Not sure. It's a brand new bed off a truck that we were putting a custom bed on, it's a steel bed, it's here.
Good job.
I look at it and take a look at it, I might just leave it in my home.
Okay. Next thing, the five fifty, then so the last time, recommended that maybe we hold on to that a little bit and post it.
Closer to snow tone.
Maybe September, so that it's, goes off in the October meeting.
What's the inspection one?
We just got inspected this year. So it's good for another year. Is that what you guys think?
I think so, that's great.
People aren't looking at flat cars right now. I talked with Scott today about the Pheasant Run project, I guess, I don't know, do you wanna talk about it and explain what you talked with Terry?
Yeah, there was kind of that question where. Yeah, there was kind of that question, where is it ready to go towards the construction? There was kind of a last ditch effort to try to get the utilities to provide more information. And I'd asked him after the last meeting, I spoke to him about a week and a half ago. He was heading out to town, and he said he didn't get anything at that point, so.
That doesn't surprise me.
So I think at this, we're at the point of sometimes those construction one calls turn up a lot better information, unfortunately. And then you kind of have to shoot from the hip on how you design around it, but the thought was
Take it slowly.
Yeah, maybe, and and I think there was gonna be a discussion at some point here, Robbie was gonna have to figure out what was included with the contractor, they do that kind of, put the one call in, exploratory dig maybe where some of the services are, just to try that, or is it something we should try?
Try to locate it.
Yeah.
Locate them ahead of time. Locate them ahead of time to see how, how, what the depth of the That's the big thing, is the depth. Right.
Because if there is a service there and it's in the right of way.
Could really change the design of the project.
Yeah. Yeah. Very much so, if the services are just in a bad spot. And then from that point, you're kind of left with, will the utility company relocate the service, or however the design is gonna be? I would assume the township can kind of put a little pressure on them at that point, to ask them to do so and see which way it goes, but.
Well, if it's outside the right of way, they're gonna say either the township pays for it, or the property owner pays for it.
But if it's in, everything is in the right of way. Gives them the right of way.
And they don't have a recorded lease in the city, may not if it's in the right of way. Then we do have the ability to direct them to move it. Whether they cooperate doesn't matter, but I think we have a stronger position.
But I think it is in that, I think it's in that step of move forward with the the one, the actual construction one call.
You didn't do a one call on that yet? I did one last year. Okay. Just to get some marks out there. I call, call again, schedule it.
Yeah, schedule it. Then we'll take a look at it, maybe have to do some exploratory digging there. We know where a lot of the depths are. You know? But some of, the electric is what concerns me.
Right.
That could be anywhere. But I'd like to keep moving on this, so we get it, try to get it done.
I don't remember exactly what we discussed last time about the roof. Are we okay to get a CoStar price for that, or how does that work, Chris?
Boy, I don't remember exactly how that discussion unfolded either. I mean if if you have a CoStar's bidder, the board could authorize using the CoStar's bidder. But I don't know, do you have a CoStar's contractor?
I kind of saw Bachman's Roofing was CoStar's, I got advice from them.
Some of them are, the bigger, they have to be, yeah, they have to be bigger ones, they wanna deal with the whole CoStar's thing. See if you, see if Bach was a CoStar's dealer, there might be a couple of CoStar's dealers, I'm not sure in the area. I could find them, CoStar's, whether I have a list of all of them, so. But that would be probably easy to surprise, sure, we could really help with more if we can, see what this price was. And it's unfair to have a vendor that we don't record, your business was come out priced for us. Yeah, you know what I mean, yeah. So I would rather just have a CoStar's vendor that's gonna come out and give you some product, and get some idea to add directly. That whole, that whole world has changed in the last two years, I think the prices have just gone crazy. I don't know if that was the best time, but the roof has been way too much longer. They're curling pretty bad right now. So why don't you contact them? See if you, if they are CoStar's, I can, some of it's, I'll look to see if there's some definite hair start for CoStar's members.
Or possibly this last year, no project. But I don't think there's a cap on that, I mean.
No, there's no dollar cap on CoStars. You know, the only thing like I, I think you and I have discussed before is CoStars takes you out of advertised public bidding.
Right.
But it doesn't relieve you of things like prevailing wage, or how you start out paid prevailing wage if it's over twenty-five thousand and it's not a road project, and the roof is clearly not a road project, so you gotta pay prevailing wages if it's over twenty-five thousand.
Qualified CoStars, vendors would know that, though. Yeah. We just have to remind them to make sure that that's included in their quote. Right. Well, see, well. And the only other thing I have is the twenty twenty-two roadwork is scheduled to start in the beginning of of August. I have others for you guys, no?
Before you got back in, I touched on it.
Are you prepped?
Yep. Everything's ready to go.
Good deal. Alright, thank you, Robbie. Secretary, paying the bills.
For the general fund, we have check numbers Royal four ninety-three to one oh five twenty-seven, including EFTs for one hundred twenty thousand dollars, six hundred nine point seventy-five cents.
I'll make a motion to prepare.
I'll second it, all in favor, aye.
State fund, we had no checks. Light fund, check number twenty-one forty-nine for six hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-five cents.
I'll make a motion to prepare.
I'll second, all in favor, aye.
Sewer fund, check numbers twenty-nine sixty-nine and twenty-nine seventy-nine, including EFTs for thirty thousand three ninety-six forty-four.
I'll make a motion to prepare.
I'll second it, all in favor, aye.
Walnut Town Fire Escrow, twenty-one forty-nine, twenty-one fifty, six thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-seven cents.
I'll make a motion to prepare.
I'll second it, all in favor, aye.
Virginville Fire Escrow, check numbers twenty-one forty-nine and twenty-one fifty for six thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-seven cents.
And I'll make a motion to prepare.
I'll second it, all in favor, aye.
That is all I have.
I don't really have anything from the chairman's report. Public participation from the floor.
Brian, your question?
Go ahead.
The the prints that you got, is that the two warehouses or the three warehouses?
It's just one warehouse in Main Street.
It's, oh, this is Main Street.
Main Street, yeah.
Max and some.
No.
That's okay.
It's just one.
Where is Main Street?
Right, where they put the, the end of Schaefer Road, across the street.
Right aside of the cemetery?
Across Memorial Gardens.
Yes.
Okay. Where where the church was supposed to go on that side?
No, the other side.
Yeah, the other side.
Between the cemetery and the the doctor's office building there.
Okay.
Their main entrance would be right off that traffic circle.
Yeah, right off Schaefer Road, the other side of Schaefer.
Okay.
The the other ones are going the other end of the black house.
Yeah. Out in your neighborhood.
Yes.
Yeah, there's now three proposed.
Wonderful. Anything else? Well, we're gonna adjourn to an executive session.
Yeah, I don't anticipate any official action as a result of this.
No.
It's just to update the board.
Update the board, okay. And then we'll come, and then we'll come back and adjourn, and then we'll come back and
Yeah, I want the video for the music.
Here, we'll ask you guys to step out.
I'm looking for assistance for these things.
Alright, yeah, no problem.